Me dirijo a ustedes, con todo respeto. He escuchado rumores, como padre, que hay una división en la administración. Que ustedes están atacando, que se están calumniando, y eso no quiero para mis hijos. Si ustedes están bien, es el reflejo de nuestros hijos, de las escuelas y de lo que representan. Hay un grupo llamado BBB y padres y miembros, y eso no nos gusta como padres, que estén ustedes haciendo una división. Se tienen que unir para ayudar a nuestros alumnos, ayudar a nuestros hijos. Para mejorar el futuro. No estén pensando en ustedes, en sus beneficios, en quién es mejor, quién es peor, quién tiene más poder. Queremos personas conscientes. Creo que es hora de trabajar todos juntos. Soy la voz de mis hijos, tengo otra de tres años, eso me van a estar viendo por aquí, y yo quiero verlos aquí. Hay tres miembros, el señor Roberto y Janet y el doctor Lusa, los he visto en mi escuela rondando los pasillos, siempre estar atentos. Hay dos miembros que solamente los veo sentados ahí, porque en mi escuela nunca los he visto. Para terminar, la unión nace la fuerza. Únanse, porque si no, los padres nos vamos a unir. Buenas noches.
Muchísimas gracias. Good evening, Dr. Lusa. Good evening, board members. I'm here to represent Roosevelt Children. Even though I've been retired for five years, Roosevelt is still deeply in my heart. And in my 27th year at Roosevelt, principal walked into my classroom and said that I would no longer be teaching bilingual third grade. That was very disturbing to me because I had such great success, I had such... So many of my students going to college, coming back and being representative of the community, and I was very proud of my students. So, that year I was told that I would no longer be able to teach third grade bilingual. So, a week ago, I went to work at Roosevelt, and I was a rowing sub, and I went to a third grade bilingual class. It was so cool, so exciting to see bilingual third. After nine years, when I worked with these children, I was able to instruct them in Spanish. All thirty of the children were Spanish speakers, and they understood every single word I used, and they understood the skills that I was teaching. And I know that comes from the top. I know that your support has made a big difference. And I'm here tonight to thank you. Thank you for making a difference. Thank you for doing a great job. And I know all of you put in lots of time in our school district. And I know it's thanks to this job, and I know you don't get enough credit, but I know what each and every one of you does. And I deeply, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. Thank you for doing such a great job and working for the children. I know I don't get enough thanks. Thank you. Coming from a teacher that works with children, I know what it's like. Thank you.
Buenas noches. Gracias, miembros del comité de aquí del distrito, Saninás. Gracias por darnos la oportunidad de venir a dar nuestras preocupaciones. Mi nombre es Silvia Huerta. Soy de la comunidad y participo mucho en las escuelas. Le doy las gracias a los miembros que están trabajando muy bien con el doctor Lusa. También el doctor Lusa, desde que está él, visita mucho las escuelas. Han cambiado mucho, mucho las escuelas. Los padres están muy contentos con el doctor Lusa. También están contentos con muchos de miembros de la mesa de aquí donde están sentados. Yo estoy molesta con un miembro que está aquí con ustedes, que manda a su esposa a sacar firmas a las casas para poder sacar un miembro que está sentado ahí con ustedes. Ese miembro que está haciendo eso en lugar de trabajar y ir a las escuelas, que ya él tiene muchos daños y no debe de estar ahí porque ya ni caso hace de la educación, ni caso hace de cómo van los niños, ni nada de lo que le importa. Es la seguridad y lo que le pagan. También quiero dar una recomendación, a ver si se puede hacer. También en muchas escuelas hay muchos maestros que tienen cerca de veinte años, y quiero que esos maestros se han removidos a otras escuelas, por favor. Porque nomás andan haciendo bolas y haciendo cosas que no deben de ser. Andan haciendo política. En las escuelas no necesitamos políticas. Necesitamos educación para nuestros niños, que nuestros niños, lo que dijo la mamá, que van muy atrás, y los maestros no se preocupan por estos niños. Les están pagando buenas ferias para que pongan atención con nuestros hijos. No dije el nombre del miembro que está sentado, porque no está, y es malo hablar de la persona que no está presente. Muchas gracias.
Hi, Kellyanne Dickerson, Lincoln teacher. Dr. Lusa and the board. I would just like to ask if we could have more accurate translation when someone is speaking English or Spanish. The Spanish speaker comes up here and says, and I can pick up words, I'm not great at following everything, but it is not being translated correctly.
Thank you very much. Who's next? Hi, my name is Oscar Ramos. I'm from Sherwood School. Yeah, Oscar Ramos from Sherwood. Yeah, I have seen... Oscar Ramos Sherwood School. I have seen Mrs. Barnes and Mr. Garcia and Mr. Lusa visit our area, and I have invited Mr. Kim a couple times. And I gotta mention that he did stop by for Science Night on Friday. A very short period, but he did make the effort. And then, he was here this morning, visiting Sherwood along with Dr. Lusa. So, Mr. Kim, I'm gonna give you credit because you were present and your name hasn't been out there, but we would really love to see you around a little bit more. Thank you for coming. Next, please.
Hi, good evening, board members. Dr. Lusa. My name is Frank Arden. I'm a student at Mission Park School. I really don't have a topic to discuss in general, but I just want to speak more in broad terms about some of the things I've been hearing. I think there's a lot of erroneous information floating around out there regarding the building a better board group and the information that we're disseminating. We do strive to ensure that everything that we post on our website is factual, verifiable. We study your board packets. You know, the motivations of parents are pure. I'm not getting up here for any political reason. I'm just getting up here because it's the right thing to do for my children, who've been personally impacted by the decisions that this body has made. And they've had negative consequences on Mission Park School in particular. And I am not, and nobody in Mission Park is necessarily opposed, that I know of, to this whole dual immersion idea. I know that's the elephant in the room, and, you know, I... It's not, that's not what the issue is. That's not it. I'm surprised that I'm hearing all this advocacy over bilingual studies. I actually support that. And I agree with a lot of the speakers who came up here and said that English language learners do deserve more support. We have a ton of them at Mission Park. We have a lot of impoverished students who are eligible for the free lunch program under the federal government. They're not, this is about, I guess, equal treatment across schools. This is about making decisions that are transparent and in the light. I'm trying to put it in very broad terms because that's really what this is about. There's no single issue that is tied to, that our efforts are tied to, to build a better board. It's just what we want for our children. We're just doing what we think is right. So, please don't organize anyone out there in the community or tell any lies about what we're doing, because it's just not true, and I don't appreciate it. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Dan McCall, and I have two children in Mission Park. And my last speaking here was in June of this year. It's amazing what two little kids in a school can do to your attitude and how you look at different things. I had no idea what the Salinas Elementary School District Board did, where they were at, or what their mission really was. But when we sit down and we listen, I've had to study the Browns Act. I've had to study the Title I funding and everything else, just to get myself up to speed on what it's all about. Frank is absolutely right on the BBB. The people that associate with the BBB are not here to denigrate you. There may be some issues that are not being clarified, and people get kind of upset if they don't get their answers. This year was the first year that I came to this district to get a list of the agenda and pursuant to the regulations. It's not just supposed to be on the website and at the school. It's supposed to be posted outside so it's available for anyone and everyone to get at at any time, and it's not. I'm doing a lot of research as a new dad, and I'm gonna continue doing it, not to antagonize anybody or do anything. But I got kids out here that they really need some help, okay? And the kids at all the other thirteen schools or twelve other schools, they're gonna need the help too. So, when we come in and we talk with you and we ask you questions, it's not to be antagonistic. And I understand how the Browns Act works, so you're not supposed to give direct answers. You're supposed to direct us to a avenue where we can best receive that information, but also research and see things as far as your attorney saying that this is your board and you run it and you control it. But actually, in being elected to these offices, the people did not give up all of their rights to you as an elected official. And so, we do have input that we would like to give so that we could be heard, because these are our kids. I get to raise these little guy, gal to be good adults, and that's all I'm asking for, and that's all a lot of people here are asking for. So, any of this anger that's going out about this is better, that's better, it should all be about what's the thirteen schools, period.
Thank you very much. I have one, two. Any more speakers? Not on the agenda, the items. Thank you, sir, for being here.
Good evening, board administration. My name is Demetra Toguneda. I'm a former teacher here in Salinas City Elementary School District. I gave thirty years of my life to this district. And as a former teacher, I just want to really appreciate the board for giving the staff or the teachers a five percent raise. I think they deserve it. I think the staff, the teachers are a very important component, or the most important component of this institution. And I take it that CSCA or other classified also got a raise, because I think you might have a me-too clause. Thank you very much. I think they deserve it. And as a substitute teacher, we also got a small raise, so thank you very much. As a teacher here in Salinas City Elementary School District, I get to substitute, and I have been substituting in about six to eight schools, Roosevelt, Lincoln, and other schools. And I have seen a difference this year. The educational ambience is more relaxed. It's more conducive to the educational needs of the children. And I want to thank the board and thank the administration for being part of that. You also have been working together with Hartnell College, in that you are now implementing the STEM program, and I think the STEM program is very, very good. I hope to see more of it, because in Hartnell College, we see that a lot of the students who take the entrance exam for community colleges, too many students are not making the grade. So, if we can focus on the elementary school districts, I think that would be a solution. And I thank you for allowing the STEM program to be part of your program. And I just think that we have so much talent here, but the reality is that we are too divided. This district used to be very, very cohesive. We would work in the interest of the total student population. I know that the student population has changed tremendously. I know that the Hispanic student population is now the majority. It has been for a long time. So, we should really, really look at programs to meet the educational needs of the student population that we have. And I give credit where credit is due. I think that the dual emergence program is a step in the right direction. And I think that we need more dual emergence programs, but on the other hand, I think we need more teachers and we need more classified also. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm going to call it quits right now to go... Yes?
Hi, my name is Claudia Melendez. I don't usually comment, but somebody mentioned that the translator was not doing a good job. And I'm bilingual. I'm also a dual interpreter. And she was doing a pretty good job. She's probably maybe, I don't know, making a word or two. But I was pretty impressed that she translated the word "feria," which means fair traditionally. But the woman who was using it was using it as money, which is a land interpreter, and I was very impressed that she got that.
Yeah, I got it too. Thank you. Thank you very much. And that was less than three minutes, right? We're gonna move on to the agenda. I may... Okay, we're gonna open it up with consent items. And is any board member have any concerns about the consent agenda? We may pull it if you wish. If not, uh... I don't hear any. Who wants to next? I mean, I'm accepting a motion to... Move the consent items? Excuse me. Excuse me. On the consent items or the previous consent items? Which item? You wanna pull that? Say again? For the record, that was coming from Mr. Rodriguez, representative of the student, I mean, the teacher association. I'm free. Put that in free. So, right, okay. So, we're gonna pull that, do it right afterwards. Okay, your motion is, Mr.? Say it out. Go ahead.
Motion to approve agenda items not including five, B, C, D, E, and G.
The consent items that we pulled here. Oh, no, you got a second on... Follow the pair?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and you go back to your consent items. So, here a motion. Who does? You have questions now, or... Okay. Go ahead, let's bring into attention. Just separate.
So, I have a question on five G pivot learning partners. It mentions coaching in the information, but I'm not sure if there's actually coaching or not, and I wanted to have that clarified. It says something about the contractor will assign coaches, and I thought somewhere else. Combination of professional development and coaching, so I'm wondering is there ongoing coaching or not? That was kind of not clear to me. It is also, they talk about establishing professional learning communities. And I'm wondering how this is different than all the money that's been spent on PLC training so far? Is this something different or not? Can filter my basic question.
Okay, let's see if we get some answers. Dr. Lusa? Yes, baby. Please say it.
Dr. Lusa, board. This is Rodriguez. In the proposal, the reference to coaches is that we are... This is administrative training. It's for all district administrators. It is for site, vice principal, program managers, cabinet, assistant superintendents, everybody. And our site principals have coaches. And their coaches will also be attending this training to follow up with our site administrators. And so, it's an ongoing, so this isn't a one-shot deal. This specific training has been set up to be five afternoon and evening sessions after school is over, from three to seven. Now, your question about the professional learning community. We did, you're absolutely right. Many people in the district attended professional development from Solution Tree and establishing professional learning communities. That is still a work in progress. And this training takes us to another level for our administrators. It is, as teachers have the opportunity to meet with one another during their Thursday early release time or during sub-release collaboration time. Currently, our district administrators don't. We do have monthly principal meetings that are akin to information sharing, but not necessarily truly a PLC. We're trying to add elements to that. So, this is just to make sure that we are working together, we are working consistently and cohesively, because there's a lot of, there are a lot of systems of support that our teachers need right now, because there's a lot of change going on there, and a lot's being asked, and our leaders need to have the skill to support teachers.
Yeah, I just want to say that in the scope of work, under Pivot Learning Partners Theory of Action, it talks about professional development and coaching. Under commitments by the client in the third bullet, it talks about POC coaches. So, it's not just talking about, I know the coaches that you mentioned are the ones that the principals already have, but that doesn't seem to be what the contractor spoke of work, whatever.
This contract, and there is no further beyond the actual training, the people who provide the training are coaches. Pivot Learning Partner coaches are the trainers. And so, what they're saying is those coaches are going to provide rigorous, challenging discussions. And it's, but it is not going to include a follow-up contract for coaching.
All right, not an ongoing. And also, I am hearing what you say about PLCs. I will say this because of quite a bit of money, and I just look at it that we have already spent, I couldn't even stop to think about all the tens and maybe hundreds of thousands we spent on having people train in professional learning communities. And I'm concerned about spending this on what looks like more training for the same thing. I don't know. It's an awful lot of money. But those are my questions.
This is not a foundational professional learning communities training. It's assuming that all of our administrators have already received the basic foundation, the two-day Solution Tree Institute, and that they have been implementing and undersized, building that collaborative culture. But that's an ongoing process. It's not a done thing. There are still new ways to do things, and I think right now, especially with Common Core and the challenges we're facing, having teachers work very effectively in teams and also having principals working side by side with them, not necessarily as bosses, but as co-learners. Not giving directions, because there's a lot of work to be done together.
Do all of our principals do, because we have so many new ones in Sherwood, do they all have the PLC training?
Of some sort. Not all of them necessarily went to Solution Tree, but they have background in training. That was something that when bringing in new administrators was a critical concern, since it is part of our established culture goals.
I'm still, it seems like an awful lot of money. I mean, it seems like to me that they already have this training. They, and I'm talking about years and years. These posters have been up here for years and years, 2006, I don't know. But for many years, I'm just, it seems like to spend more money on something they already have seems wasteful to me. But those are my questions. It's up to you guys to decide.
Thank you very much.
Shall we go to the next?
The board?
How do you want to do?
Oh, the next one, I'm sorry.
I don't know how you want to do. Do you want me to vote on it? Do you want me to go to the next one? What do you want?
So, we're going to the next one. Next one, and because of timing... Next one, and because of timing and also understanding with, to clarify.
All right, the next one is the Leadership and Learning Center. It talks about two to three teacher leaders from each school site. And I was wondering how those were chosen. I haven't heard of this before I read it. And also, it talks about, it talks about, or maybe I kind of inferred that these trained people are going to come back with this information or these new skills. How are they going to disseminate this information to everyone else? That there's only, there's two to three teacher leaders, so it's not going to be like per grade level, it sounds like. So, how are they chosen? How is that information going to really come back to us? And, sorry, I have some notes here. They, it talks about 25 principals in session one. I'm wondering, we don't have 25 principals, so.
Central administrators? Does it say principals? I'm sorry.
It says, well, section one says 25 principals, and then section two says 40 assistant principals and other leadership.
Okay, that is, that session one is principals and central office administrators. So, that is apparent, thank you. I can help that corrected.
Well, it's just, yeah, I figured, I kind of thought maybe. And then the 40 assistant principals and other leadership?
And those would be teacher leaders, program managers at sites. And we anticipate up to 40. So, the contract would include training for up to 60 people, two sessions of two days. We can't do it all together in one large group because we can't count our principals and vice principals gone from the site at the same time. So, it's being split into two sessions.
So, the teacher leaders are going to be with the assistant principals? So, it's a difference?
Yes.
Okay, and then can you tell me how you are going to choose the teacher leaders per site?
You know, this hasn't been approved, so they haven't been chosen yet. I think that's something that we could look at. And if this is something that you would like as a posted opening, there's no compensation involved in it. But we would be looking for teachers that are on site leadership teams, lead teachers in technology, in lab, in rally, on our picked committee, teachers that have, our benchmark committee now is working really hard, that have a true commitment to the school improvement process and to students, and also to working with other teachers. So, there hasn't been established, this is what we're going to do. But if you would like that, I can work with you if you'd like a posted opening.
Well, I appreciate that, but I guess, I mean, you're saying that this isn't approved, but if I hadn't brought it up, it would have been approved. So, I mean, I'm kind of a little bit hard after the words, before the words. How would I vote? Okay, so you and I can talk about how those will be trained. And then can you explain to me how these people are going to disseminate the information? I don't, I was trying to understand that data teams and all that, from what was written.
Yeah, there's a lot of information. You can see there's a lot of different aspects to it in terms of its theme. One of it, some of it's about tools, some of it could be shared, the whole staff, about various tools to look at data. One of the interesting topics that they addressed very thoroughly is the development of formative assessments. And so, that is something that, again, at a whole staff meeting would, doesn't have to be a two and a half, an hour and a half training, but that's the kind of work that can be introduced, whole staff, and then actually done at the grade levels. And hopefully, teacher leaders, of course, are working with their own grade levels. And then the principal and the program manager, vice principals can be resources to assist other teams. But the teacher leaders can also be resources for guidance. I mean, if people have questions, may not want to go to an administrator, they also have peers that have the same information to share.
I can, does this mesh or does this go with this proposed I results program?
There's an information later on on the agenda called I results, which is a data platform. Data is student data, looking at it, we have a wealth of data, but can we be using it in more effective ways to really get to our students' needs, to really get to effective practices? And this is a very, very deep conversation that we're going to be having in the next couple of years with Common Core. And so, they're related, yes, but they're, they don't, they're not dependent on each other.
Well, I'm in the, I guess, yeah, dependent. I just, I mean, they're both looking at data. So, I'm wondering, will they fit together? Is that I result going to support this kind of student with the data that the data team is going to look at?
For that, yes. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. You have three more questions.
Yes, thank you.
I'd also like to include that, just as a reminder, to encourage people to, you know, do call the department on a case or some kind of an item and clarify that before coming to the board meeting if at all possible. And that's good to have that dialogue privately and also to have it publicly. But at the same time, you know, it takes up time that other people are waiting in line to take care of their business.
Well, I'll let you just speak to that because I've been told you're the second president of the board. It's told me to ask these questions in private. And I personally don't think that's the best way. I think this dialogue has just informed a lot of my teachers, a lot of people about what's going on. I get these on sometimes Wednesday, usually Thursday. I read them on the weekend because I'm working all day. And today, I worked all day, so I didn't have time to come to Mrs. Sanderson to talk about it. So, I understand that, I think the, having the dialogue out here in the open was really where it belongs. And I told the previous president that, and I still believe that.
Thank you very much. The next question, please.
Yes, sure. Okay, the next one is D, Maria Del Hardman Gonzalez. I just, there was nothing that really spoke to who she is and exactly what her position is. And she's just, I don't know. I was trying to look at it, but I didn't know.
Ms. Rodriguez, would you like to add some background on that?
Sure.
Okay. Dr. Lucy?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop, please.
Maria Hardman Gonzalez is a credential educator who also has a master's in adult learning. She is somebody that the district has worked for both directly, some contracts in the past, and without even start grant many years ago, and then as well, the migrant education school readiness program. This is only the second year that the district again has had this subgrant. It's been a program serviced to our district, but it had been run through MCOE, through the county office. And she had worked with our district in that program in the capacity of working via the county. So, this is the, last year was kind of the pilot year with a county subgrant directed to the districts. So, this is our second year of that. And so, she has experience working with the program and would serve a fundamental role in that she has the expertise in both the early learning and can provide that ECE service. And she's also a full-time educator at Hartnell College and has the background in the adult learning that the grant target is, the core targets, the family. It focuses on children three to five years old who are not currently receiving any other type of early childhood education service. They're not in our state preschool program and have another preschool program. And it also provides support for the families in terms of parenting sessions, literacy skills to help them increase their child's access to school readiness skills at the home, providing that. And then as well, getting them lined up with courses such as English as a second language or GED and other adult learning.
And is this done in the home, in classes?
It's done, it's the program that really nobody realizes it goes on in the evening at Sherwood at night. It's for families that are not, usually the families we see on our campuses during the day. So, if you were to go over to Sherwood right now, there are families there. Actually, it's probably a little later, but they're there until about 8:30, students and parents. And so, it's four days a week, the program, or actually, it didn't start yet this week. Our fall cycle starts, would be starting. But all summer long, it's the program that goes on when nobody really realizes. But it's very active in the evening, how it, that Sherwood serves migrant families.
Yeah, so other, not just Sherwood?
No, not just Sherwood families. It's, the target again is, actually, it's three to five, but it's really students who would be entering kindergarten in the fall who have not had an early childhood education experience is the priority of the service. But if they have siblings that are in the three to five, the family.
And the next one's Royal Academy. One of the things I stood up and talked about, the amount of money that we have spent with Mr. Vidal Montes before, and it seems to me it's excessive. But one of the things in the analysis is that the program observations as well as student, parent, and staff feedback have provided useful data to support our selection and contract for the services. And I was wondering, I know that they talked about doing write-ups for parents and students before, but I don't remember if we had a report on that. But I'm wondering how staff feedback is collected and what staff are we talking about?
Please, Ms. Bishop.
The staff feedback that collected was staff feedback from our houses, our homework assistance supervisor activities. Part of this contract is addressing services that we provided during the BES program, as well as feedback collected from staff who worked in the summer program where the royal team was a component of the program. So, it's staff directly working within these programs.
And the staff for the summer program, not teachers then?
It was.
Or they were teachers?
Yes, we spoke with teachers. And in fact, some, two, I think, actually spoke positively positive here at the board meeting. Two, yeah. So, this one's directly working with students who are attending the program.
Just point out, it's $35,000 and then almost $40,000. So, it's very costly, it's a lot of money. And as I have in the past, I'll point out that it seems that we might be able to get some different types of arts into the schools and for these students, and we look for some local talent. So, I want to point that out and hope that the board will look at that. The next one was more, I just wanted to mention, Sun Belt G, Sun Belt staffing. A couple of things on this, we're contracting for special ed teachers. Of course, this affects the teacher bargaining unit, but we understand the need for the teachers. The thing is that I am hoping that the district will do all it can to get a regular credential teacher not going through a third party. But also, I would like to point out that the district has talked many times and over and over about taking back more classes from the county for special ed. We are having a very difficult time finding special ed teachers and other staff. And I hope that the district and the board will take that into consideration as we take back programs. That to staff them with, what's the word? Contractors is not the best. I don't even know if it's the best in the interest of my special ed students. I've got them in mind, that's who I teach. So, I just want to say, I hope that the district will take this into consideration before they start taking back more classes, which I understand that we are, and so that to make sure that we can get proper staffing and to get strong staff in these positions.
Dr. Lucy, you have a response?
You're right on, Carol. As you will know, the difficulty is to get staff properly credential. And we're looking at the possibility to change policy and acknowledge more years of experience so we can have a bigger pool of credentials. What will I write? No, no, sir, okay. But we know it's a difficulty to recruit people.
Right, I would just say that I think that we definitely will encourage the board to look carefully. If we do not, we take back additional classes. And as we, that would be one of the things I think we have to consider very carefully.
Yes, we request seven classes, but we need to be realistic in how many we can take. Maybe six, maybe five, maybe four, maybe three, but it is, we're studying that, working with companies.
Can I, on that note, I think if we are looking into taking back classes, I think and we're pulling our students back to our district, I think it would be, behave us if we actively recruit the county teachers to bring them right on over to us. I think that would be a logical step that, I think a lot of the kids will already know the teachers, they obviously have their credentials. I don't know how to do that. I'm just saying that may be something to put in the way.
Absolutely. There's all kinds of experience. You're going to move in that direction with all kinds of strategies.
Right, right.
Just one idea.
Ms. Barnes, you have a comment?
No comment, but I'm ready to make a motion. Make a motion for, to approve five B, C, D, E, and G.
Okay, so move. Second. Item, unless you're, let me, let me back up a little bit. Did you send it, Mr.? All right, now go ahead.
I just want to clarify.
Yeah.
Five G is canceled. You can cancel it. $60 is. So.
Motion and second?
Second.
Hello, the chair? Aye. Name, winner. Okay, we're going back to the content. The changes are the most. Any comment? Barnes? We did. They go to sit?
Yeah, you did.
Okay, included, yes.
I just want to make one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Kim.
Is that I don't want to see this King's Academy come up.